Okay.
You ready?
Yep, you betcha.
All right, we'll call meeting in order. It is Tuesday, September fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-one. This is the Stoughton City Council, and we'll do the roll call.
Okay. Caravelo.
Here.
Doom.
Here.
Kylie.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Hunt.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Lagaki.
Here.
Hayaski.
Present.
Reeves.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
Tokowski.
Here.
Okay, and we have Rachel absent and excused for the evening. So we have eleven aldermen present.
All right, thank you. Minutes and reports are in the packet. And then I had one sign up to speak, and I'll put that on the screen, and that was from Sharon Mason Borzma. She may have had trouble getting in. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
All right, so basically Sharon is one of the board members of Hats, and we have an agenda item on there for tonight for the fifteen thousand dollars that the city council had donated to their project from a couple of years ago. And that project fell through, but they have a new one that they would like us to reissue that money back to them for. So Sharon was going to speak to that tonight. So if she joins us, we'll certainly give her an opportunity to do so. Otherwise, we'll move on to the agenda and come back if we need to. And it looks like maybe they got signed in. Sharon, did you get signed in?
I did. I just got in.
Okay, perfect. Good timing. I have your letter up on the screen, so if you're ready, you can go ahead and speak.
Thank you so much. My name is Sharon Mason Borzma, and I live in Stoughton, Wisconsin. And I'm here to address the agenda item on the Housing Advocacy Team of Stoughton, also the Step Forward Program. I would like to bring to your attention tonight about a Stoughton-based nonprofit organization entitled Hats, the acronym for Housing Advocacy Team of Stoughton. Hats was incorporated in two thousand and nineteen to address affordable housing needs for those within the advocacy team of Stoughton. And what it is is they, through the Stoughton School District, they work with public and private entities and individuals with the Stoughton area community in the prevention of homelessness. A while ago, the reps of Stoughton, of Hats, met with members of the Finance Committee and later with members of City Council, and thus a grant for fifteen thousand dollars was approved to be used in partnership with a developer to build a four-unit complex on Pine Street in Stoughton. The developer had substantial funding from Dane County, City of Stoughton, donations for hats and monies they could obtain through a loan. However, a funding gap remained that could not be overcome, and thus the project is no longer feasible at this time. Thus, the fifteen thousand dollars was returned to the city. But unfortunately, the need for individuals and families near homelessness is not going away, but it's increasing, especially since the COVID pandemic. Because of the need for this challenging issue facing many communities, including Stoughton, two Hats board members met with members of the Finance Committee recently to request the consideration that the fifteen thousand dollars be provided toward the expenses of the newly formed program under the umbrella of Hats, called the Step Forward Program. This program is modeled from the Housing and Homeless Prevention Programs in nearby communities of Edgerton and Janesville. This will be the first Stoughton-based program of its kind for individuals and families to address issues for gainful, permanent housing. It would be designed to achieve stability and sustainability for permanent housing through intensive case management services from start or the Stoughton Senior Center, depending upon the age of the participants that applied and later accepted in the Step Forward Program. Besides stable housing, the Step Forward Program would maintain steady employment, including job training, higher education if needed, or increase household income through other sources. Case management services would also assist in household budgeting, life skills, and making referrals to appropriate agencies for obtaining the goal of self-sufficiency. As a board member and representative of Hats, I am requesting that the city council consider the reissuance of the fifteen thousand dollars to help launch this new program for one year. We anticipate the housing cost per family would be approximately twenty thousand dollars per year, and this breaks down into two categories. Fifteen thousand a year for rental, case management services to be approximately five thousand dollars per year per family. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Sharon. Sharon was the only one signed up to speak this evening, so we'll go to communications and presentations. Any communications from council members tonight? Hearing none. I just have one. September is Chamber of Commerce Month, so I just wanted to take a moment to thank Sarah and Kelly and all the members and volunteers for all the things that they do in the city of Stoughton. So thank you, Chamber of Commerce. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, and there's three items in the Consent Agenda for consideration. I would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Move to approve.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right, so there's a motion and a second. Would anybody like anything acted on separately?
Mayor, there was one in the council minutes. There was one misspelling in there that would be, would definitely be for clarification in it in communications and presentations. Letter B, the carpsy is misspelled in there, so should just be C-A-R-P-C. Otherwise, that wouldn't, wouldn't lead you to anything if you went to Google search that.
Okay, I think we can handle that. Anything else?
Nope, that was it.
All right, thank you. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed? That motion carries. It takes us to item number six, which is old business. And this would be our one oh two of two thousand and twenty-one. And that would be coming from Community Affairs Council Policy, which would be Alder Person Haley.
Excuse me. Yeah, this is the rules on virtual meetings and hybrid meetings that was sent back to CACP. And we made a few changes according to those guidance from the council. So this is, I think, a little bit more clear. If the attorney has any, any detail to add.
And you want to introduce the resolution, please?
Yep, I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Anything you want to add, Attorney Dragney?
I would simply say that after the council adopted the virtual meeting policy, some questions were raised about how to deal with the situation that might arise if there was a decision or needed to be a decision made about having a meeting that's entirely virtual. And who, who could make that decision and for both the council and for committees? Because the way the rules currently are set up, the assumption is that the council meeting will be held in the council chamber. And so it'll be an in-person meeting, but that people would have the option to appear virtually if they want. So this, this gives the mayor and the council president the authority to decide that, in fact, the meeting will be entirely virtual, for example. And this will also allow committees and boards and commissions to make those same determinations. So that's the reason that we felt that we needed to clarify that.
And I would just add, so for the committees and boards and commissions, I think the last sentence states that it's up to the chairperson to determine that. Obviously, you know, the chairperson would probably be getting feedback from its members before they made that decision. But for those of you that, that do chair the meetings, it's kind of going to be your call whether you want to do in-person, virtual, or you know, the hybrid is acceptable, but if you want to do it strictly virtual as we're doing now, I think that would be at the discretion of the chair. Any questions or comments on that one? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed? That motion carries. Next item is our one thirty-seven of two thousand and twenty-one. And this one here came from the committee of the whole, so I guess I would have President Hirsch introduce this one.
Sure. This is authorizing the use of the American Rescue Plan funds to fund the replacement of privately-owned lead service lines at properties that do not have a residential component as well as other costs associated with the private side lead service replacement that are not reimbursed by the DNR grant with up to a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And this is our one thirty-seven, two thousand and twenty-one, and I so move.
Is there a second? Second by Alder Person Johnson. Anything you want to elaborate on, President Hirsch?
Well, we discussed this during the Committee of the Whole meeting, but I think there's been a couple of people that are on this meeting today that weren't at that meeting, so I invite Director Weiss to kind of go over this for the people that weren't there. So in a kind of a reminder for everybody that was.
Thank you. So what this comes out of is, you know, basically, our goal has been to replace a hundred percent of the lead service lines throughout our community. We got a grant. That grant, though, only is limited to a residential component, a daycare school that actually has school taking place, so even administrative buildings wouldn't be considered to be grant-eligible. Through investigative efforts, we did find nine properties that have lead service lines that would be considered not grant-eligible. So as we kind of walk through this, and these properties have varying uses, one's the museum, one's a funeral home, one houses a fitness center. So I think that there's potentially some alignment maybe between what COVID has potentially, you know, impacted these businesses. But the businesses themselves vary quite a bit. So looking for a funding source potentially to be able to help support the replacement as well. By our ordinance, they will be mandated regardless of how the outcome of this is to replace their lead service. The other properties, and we've got about seven hundred and twelve that have been impacted, have been grant-eligible. The other piece of this, and I do want to really thank Jamin for recognizing this, is that there are costs that we're incurring on the private side, so to move this work forward because we have this grant, however, are not grant-eligible, and they're also not able to be recovered in our rates because they're basically, you know, funding. It's really the engineering on the, to do the private side engineering. It's not grant-eligible, only construction is. But we also can't recover that in our rates because it's for the private side. So that's how we arrived at the hundred and ten thousand, basically an estimate of about forty-seven thousand to do the replacement of those nine commercial properties, and the remainder monies is to cover our engineering for the private work.
All right, thank you, Jill. Are there any questions?
Alder Lagaki here.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Jean.
I can't hear this enough, and I think Jill said it, but I just want to confirm. Will this mean that Stoughton is a hundred percent lead line-free, the city of Stoughton, with this wonderful, amazing resolution?
Well, I hope so, Jean. I would like to say absolute.
That was leading. I thought it was a yes.
I know, and I wanted to jump on it and say yes, but we do have two properties right now that are in probate. So there are some odd little situations that we are still navigating. I'm still extremely hopeful that this will make us a hundred percent lead-free. We will be able to gain access and be able to, you know, basically replace lead services at those two properties. But we just have a few properties here that are kind of lingering out there that we're having some issues on logistics. But I'm still extremely hopeful that we will work through that before the end of the project.
Excellent, and thank you. Probate is never fun, and so I understand for me, this is like as close as a hundred percent you can get. Congratulations. I think this is a great resolution.
Thank you.
I totally agree, and I hope that even if it's ninety-nine point nine 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 two percent, you know, lead-free, that we go out and advertise, you know, do a celebration at, you know, at the Cap Times, a hub, and to let everybody know that we are successful. This is great for our community, but also that they can do it too, because I really hope that it really shows other communities that they can get it done as well, and that it's a good thing. So thank you, Jill, for your leadership in getting this, you know, on the way of being completed.
Thank you, and thank you all for your support, and our staff has done an amazing job. I mean, they've done a lot of heavy lifting and getting out and doing the investigations, but without you guys and your support, thank you. I'm so excited. Right now, we just calculated as of Friday, we are at five hundred and fifty that have been completed. That puts us at seventy-seven percent.
That is fantastic.
All right, any other questions or comments? Yeah, I believe we had a motion, so all in favor, say aye.
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 And is anybody opposed? None opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Item number eight, discussion and possible action regarding the park naming. This one also came from CACP, Alder Person Haley.
All right, yeah, this has come through parks and CACP. I believe it was a citizen suggestion that we turn the little patch of public land behind the senior center along the river into a named public park. Everyone agreed that was a good idea, so we had public input and a naming contest. According to policy, CACP kind of makes a suggestion to council. So we narrowed it down to two different choices. We have Heritage Park and we have Carl Sampson Park. So we can open it up for discussion or motions.
So just to finish up in the packet, highlighted is the, the policy that needs to be taken under consideration. And then what I did for the CACP is I took the, basically separated it into three categories. One was kind of just generic names that people came up with. Another one was, had Norwegian heritage within the name, and then the third one was named after a person or a family in Stoughton. So based on that, that's kind of how they narrowed it down to the two. So we can either open it up for discussion, or if somebody has a favorite, they can make a motion. I guess it's up to you guys.
Jim, if I could.
I would. Go ahead, or Greg.
Okay. Well, I'm on a CACP, and one of the, the names that I found interesting, or, 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 what do I say, would be my number one, number one, number two, was Carl Sampson. That was one that I suggested as well. I thought it was, was a good name to do. However, I'm going to put my support behind Heritage. And the reason, the reason I'm doing that is because if you look right across the river, you have the mural, the Heritage mural, and right across the street, you have the Heritage Museum. I think it is extremely fitting that this be Heritage Park. So because of those reasons, I'm, I'm going to support Heritage Park, and if nobody has any objections, I'm going to make that as a motion to accept Heritage Park as the name.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second by Tokowski. Anything else, Alder Person Johnson?
No, that pretty much sums it up for me.
All right, we'll open it up to anybody else. Alder Person Schumacher, where are you going to speak?
I was actually going to go for the opposite of what Greg was saying and was going to recommend Carl Sampson Park because of what sort of personality he was and how, how he meant quite a bit to a lot of the citizens in here. I've seen him do his Gettysburg Address many, many, many times, and it's was, was fantastic to have witnessed that the number of years I was able to. I don't know if we can have, we can't really have competing motions. One's got to come up first and, and vote. But I would have my support on, on Carl Sampson.
If I could.
Haley?
Sorry, did we have a second on that motion?
Yeah.
We did.
Um, I'm, I'm just a little hesitant about Heritage Park because it's, we, we've been talking a lot about equity on the CACP committee, and I think Heritage, you know, in, in a, in a vacuum is pretty innocuous, but it is sort of a a buzzword for certain communities who want to make heritage exclusionary. And unfortunately, I don't, I don't think it would be as appropriate a, as a choice as the other one.
I guess, may I ask a question?
Sure.
I just wonder if it is maybe too hopeful to think that someday the word heritage would encompass our entire history? Maybe it's a reminder to strive for that. I'm not sure. You know, that's something in the way that this would be presented to, I think. That's all.
Yeah, I agree, Joyce. That would be wonderful, but based on the mural across the street and very exclusive Heritage Center, that's very Norwegian emphasized. I don't think that people will accept it, that, that was the intent when that wasn't what was just presented.
Okay.
If I could, I, I do not disagree with, with, with what's been said. I, I'm in the same vein with Weiss on this, that I think that heritage means a lot more than just our Norwegian heritage. And it's, that's the, that, to me, that is the community's heritage, just like what Tobacco Days in, in Edgerton used to be. They don't call it Tobacco Days anymore. They call it Heritage Days. It's, it's, it's about the community, and I think that that's where it, it needs to go. It's, and yes, the Norwegian part of it, it is there. It is part of our heritage. But it is only part and parcel of it. It is not the entire heritage. The city was founded by a Yankee, someone from, from Massachusetts, I believe he was. There were also a good number of Germans in this community. There was a good number of, of, of other ethnic groups that were, were in this community. It's just that the, the Norwegian portion of it was, was dominant for a period of time. And, and it, it became part of this community. I don't, I don't see where it's a negative. I, I don't. It, it's, when we have our, the Namaa Festival, everyone is accepted. Everyone can be Norwegian or can be Scandinavian or can be whatever weekend that they want to be. So to make that argument, I think is, 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 I don't know. I don't want to say disingenuous. That's not exactly right. It's, it's short-sighted is what it is. And I, and I feel that we're, we're slighting the community's perception or, or its, its ability to accept and to be diverse. So to me, heritage means a lot more than just being Norwegian or so I, I'm, I'm, I'm having, I'm having trouble with that, and I, and I think that the heritage is a good run. I also think that Carl Sampson would be good, but I think that, that there's, there's a place for Carl, and I don't think that it's in this park. I think we're, what we need to do with Carl is something like raise funds for a statue and put a statue up in Veterans Park because of all of the stuff that he did for the VFW and for the Legion and, and his reciting of the Gettysburg Address. That's, that, I think, to me, would be a more appropriate acknowledgement of Carl's contribution to the community. I'm, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have their hand up? President Hirsch?
Yeah, I guess. I guess when I first read the Heritage Park, it didn't sit well with me. Because if we are trying to create an inclusive community, and right now, you know, if you talk to anybody, they say our heritage is this Norwegian heritage, and that, I think that makes some people feel less welcome. If the mural across that park was actually an inclusive mural that had all the different races and ethnicities that are, that encompass our community, I would say yes, but it's not. And neither is the Heritage Center across the street. It's very geared towards their Norwegian heritage and their genealogy. And so even when I was over there and just said, hey, you know, ever thought about opening the genealogy up to, you know, all of us German folks, and they were very against that. So it's not, you know. I, I, I agree. I wish it was a good, that right now that we could say that, yes, we're embracing everything, but it, it's not really, it doesn't sit, it, it's not sitting well, is that, is the right name for that park? And that's all I'm going to say.
All right, anybody else?
One last thing, Tim, to Regina's point. Again, you know, I, I understand that there is that sentiment out there, but I would ask this of every one of us. Do we not all have a heritage, whether it's Norwegian, German, Swedish, Danish, you know, African, whatever that heritage is? Don't we all have a heritage? And so when we say Heritage Park, isn't that referring to that heritage? Can't we all identify with, with something where, you know, where our, our ancestors came from or who our ancestors were?
All right, I see Alder Person Haley and then Lagaki.
Yeah, um, I think Heritage Park is lonesome, kind of read like a Mad Lib where you fill in the blank. And in, in the context of Stoughton, that blank for most people is going to be filled in with Norwegian heritage. And that, it's, it's something to celebrate, the, the history, but I But I do think that could be seen as continuing to, you know, make that the focus at the expense of other, other populations who, you know, have lived here for a long time too. And I know it's kind of a nuanced critique I'm trying to make. And I'm probably not doing it justice, but that's what I've got for now.
All right, I have Alder Person Lagaki and then Reeves.
And Tim, can you put the back up? Yeah, because I didn't know if you knew that you were still screen sharing.
This one?
Yeah, I mean, well, one of them, you were putting up your emails, which was very distracting.
Sorry. Alder Person Lagaki and then Reeves.
I sit on CACP and I also shared in those discussions that I have a great dedication and a love of social justice and inclusion. And I'm of mixed mind on this. And I think the right answer is going to be the one that we choose, but if it's done very thoughtfully and intentionally. I have concerns that the word heritage has lots of white supremacist links that we don't intend and we want to celebrate the diversity. And if we end up choosing that, I volunteer to be part of the wordsmithing people who will come up with a plaque that is balanced and speaks to the values that have been spoken to on that name. I went to Urban Dictionary, heritage comes up fairly benign. Urban Dictionary is one of my go-tos. But I do see the connections to Confederacy and things. But right, every time in history has that going on. And so I loved that CACP when I heard respect for Carl's background as well as another white male to be very, very sharing of the detail. And, and when I think of Carl and having known him just a little bit in some of my years here, I was able to share a couple of car rides with him when he'd walk down the Slippery Hill. And Carl was a man who stood for the principles of the Gettysburg Address. And he stands for inclusion. I think that he, and he's a man who just happens to be white. So I love the focus and the consideration that I heard at the committee meeting. And I do have my own personal preference, but I, I think both can be worthy in how we approach it. And I, I would volunteer and ask that what, whichever one we choose, that, that we allow ourselves a chance to include our definition of heritage or the principles that Carl stood for. And that he really, why he really believed in the Gettysburg Address because of that time in history and what it did of emancipation for others. So I think we have two great choices. I do have concerns about heritage and, and it's, and I don't have any doubts about Carl Simpson and it being right next to the senior center. And may I ask if we're identifying Carl Sampson and in honor of all of our seniors would be verbiage you would hear me express at a meeting, I like that as well. So it's the principles and, and the right one is the one that we're going to choose. I think both are worthy, but I guess I just wanted to speak to the information that way.
Alder Person Reeves?
Yeah, I would say I was leaning toward Carl because when I moved to Stoughton shortly after, I was asking a neighbor, you know, tell me about Stoughton, tell me about the history because I was brand new to Stoughton. And he said, well, and he was actually 80, but he said, let me tell you who can, let me introduce you to somebody that can talk to you about Stoughton. And so he walked me around. He was charming. He was clearly loved Stoughton. And he shared so much information that I, I still don't think I would have had, had I not had an opportunity to meet him. So he, to me, just represented so much of what I love about Stoughton. He was generous with his time. He, you know, as I said, he just epitomized Stoughton. And he was sort of quirky and kind. And so for me, it was that personal connection and feeling like he really represented Stoughton. So that's why I really felt like that was a good fit from my perspective.
Okay, last chance. Anybody else? Okay, so we do have a motion. The motion is to name it.
Greg, you were muted.
Yeah, I was. Thank you. Could I, could I just, just quick, Tim?
Sure.
One last time, please. We cannot make a mistake on this. We can't. Either one of these is, it's like, like Jean was saying, like Lisa was saying, you know, they're, they're both really good. And I appreciate what Jean was saying too. I think that's, that's a wonderful idea. You know, I, what I think we need to do here is, I don't, I don't know that doing this through a motion is probably the way we need to do this. I'm thinking that maybe I should withdraw my motion and then just do a straw vote on which one we would choose and then make the motion accordingly. So I know, well, as Chair, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you would prefer to do it that way or if you want to do it motion versus motion.
Well, it depends on how strictly you want to follow Robert's rules. Matt, do you ever thought about that?
You're exactly right. It depends on how, I would say if the council can, by unanimous consent, agree on a procedure, then that's fine. You can do it however you want, but otherwise we should follow the rules.
Okay, so.
Really, the motion belongs to the floor.
Yep.
It's really how Robert's rules works.
Okay, so we would vote on, vote on this and then if it fails, then we would vote on a second motion that would. Yeah, okay.
All right.
There could be an amendment.
No, we'll do it this way.
Okay.
Don't make it more difficult, Matt.
Yeah.
So the motion on the floor that was seconded was to name it Heritage Park. And all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Oops, aye.
And those opposed?
No.
No.
Whoop. I believe the noes have it. So then I guess I would maintain another motion if there's one out there.
I'll make the motion for Carl Sampson Park.
Oh, looks like somebody beat you to it. Okay, so I have a motion by Schumacher. Is there a second?
I, second.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make an amendment. Carl Sampson Park is the name and that we look at some language that depicts that that's the park right next to the senior in honor of all seniors.
Okay. Yeah, I'll probably have you work with Public Works on that. All right, so the motion is for Carl Sampson Park. There's a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
I, I just had, I don't know if I might just.
I thought I offered an amendment. Perhaps it's not an amendment. It's just I should work with Public Works on that verbiage. Okay.
Yeah, you don't need to worry about it, Jean. You don't need a second amendment for that. That would be something that would just be done through staff. It'd be fine.
No.
I appreciate the clarification. Thank you. Sorry, Joyce.
Sure, Alder Person Tokowski, did you have something?
Yeah, just something brief. Just in the future, I think we might want to consider the entire topic of a policy that might include whether or not we'd like to name things after individual people. That's it.
Okay, and we would take that up at, well, I think we take it up at CACP or Parks. I'll have to look at the policy closer. Because the parks starts and then it goes from there to CACP. But I think the rules are probably made at CACP, but we'll have to check into that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? All right, that motion does carry. Thank you. Good discussion. Next item number nine is the, would be the Hats request. And this one here looks like it came out of the Finance Committee. Alder Person Schumacher.
We don't have a resolution set up for this. Is that, am I right about that? I don't, I don't see any verbiage for that.
Yeah, I don't believe there is. So I think you can just make a motion if you want to donate the money to the Hats team.
All right, I will make a motion then to donate this $15,000 back into the Hats Foundation.
And I think I heard a second from Alder Person Doom. Is that correct? All right, any discussion, Alder Person Schumacher?
Just simply when we talked about this in committee, you know, we, we all really liked the program and, and what it was set out to do. And we thought that, you know, we're really looking forward to seeing that Pine Street housing getting built. And then when the deal kind of fell apart, it was disappointing, but we decided it was worth another shot to keep working at, at this issue within the city. And it was unanimous decision within the committee for it.
All right, any questions or comments from Alders?
The only question I had, is there any, may I have to make, well, because there's a resolution, but is there any way that we could have like a end with a year report from Hats to, you know, they don't have to tell us, you know, every single nickel and dime that was spent, but overall what was all accomplished with that money? So we can feel good about giving them $15,000 and that it actually was used as intended?
Sure, I mean, I attend quite a few of the meetings with Sharon and the others. And, you know, I'm sure they would be more than happy to give the council an update. It would probably help them with their future fundraising efforts. Sharon, if you have any thoughts, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't see any problem with that at all. I think accountability is really important. And also information about what this program will do for people who are at risk of being homeless or homeless. So I think that's important for not only the city council, but also for donors and the general public. So I think that would be, I'm speaking for the organization, but as a board member, I don't see any problem with that.
So what would be like a good timeline, like a year from now? That we, you know, would like to see like how the money was spent in what programs? So we can, you know, we can be proud of what we've done?
Sure, I think that maybe if you want to make it a six month, it's hard to know when this program is going to get off the ground depending upon housing availability. So we're hoping to do it by maybe after the first of the year. So if you want it in six months after it gets off the ground, or if you want to say in a year, an annual report, whatever works for, for all of you.
I think an annual report, it seems like I can get off the ground for six months or more. That would be, that would satisfy what I was looking for. And I'll let the other council members chime in.
Alder Person Lagaki.
I like the idea of the annual report, particularly before the budgeting season because if we're going to be dedicated to housing, it will be fresh in our minds and the data will be helpful as we're looking at budgeting. I suggest not at the end of the budget meetings, but rather early in the process.
Sounds reasonable.
All right, any other thoughts or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number 10 is R141 of 2021 is a resolution authorizing the submittal of an application for grant funding through the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, also known as WIDAC, for a community development investment grant, which is a CDI. President Hirsch, this one, I think started with the RDA, didn't it?
Yeah, it started with the RDA, I believe, and Ozzy can help me out with this too, where they came to one of our RDA meetings along with Gary Becker to discuss the possibilities of applying for this grant. And I think Gary has been helping them put it together, if I'm not mistaken.
All right, so I'm hoping maybe you can introduce this resolution then?
Sure. You sort of did, so, but it's R141 2021 resolution authorizing the submittal of an application for the grant funding through the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation Community Development Investment Grant Program or CDI. And I so moved. Second.
A second by Alder Person Reeves. Anything else you want to share, President Hirsch?
Well, this is, if I got this right, this is the new owners of the Doughboy, was considered the Doughboy building to help them renovate that site, that building that was in really bad disrepair. And they're making it into a great wood makers, artist maker space and a storefront for beautiful wood products, if I'm not mistaken.
That sounds about right. Grand Inspired is the name. And it looks like Joanne Grassman is here. Anything you want to add, Joanne?
Yeah, thank you Regina for those kind words. That's exactly what the grant is for. This is, it's just an amended amount. And the, there was some, it came out of a good heart of the person at WIDIC who said, Joanne, why don't you go back, look at what your expenses are really going to be and resubmit an amount? And not knowing that once I did that, it would not match the exact amount that the council approved from the last resolution. So it's really just a slight adjustment in that amount for WIDIC's bookkeeping purposes to make sure the two numbers are exactly the same.
All right, anybody have any questions or comments or hopes for Joanne as we go through this process?
Fingers crossed that it goes through and you get the grant.
Yes, fingers crossed. And hopefully I don't have to replace too many roofboards. That's what I hope for.
Congratulations on this venture. As we said, it's very exciting. District two is very happy about this. Yeah.
All right, not hearing any questions. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Thank you for being here, Joanne. Next item 11 is R138. And I guess the next three have all gone through the RDA. And the Finance Committee has looked at some of these. And Attorney Dragney, do you want to do an overview or how would you like to go through this?
Sure. And you're correct, the agreement that is the subject of this resolution has been presented to the RDA. They've studied it carefully. They've, they have approved it. agreement that is the subject of this resolution has been presented to the RDA. They've studied it carefully. They've, they have approved it. The Finance Committee has seen this agreement on more than one occasion, I believe, and recommended it for approval. And I believe we have previously reviewed this agreement with the city council. So this, I don't believe is the first time the council has seen this agreement either. This is one of two agreements that you'll be looking at tonight relating to the riverfront redevelopment. This agreement involves the agreement by the city and the redevelopment authority to sell the phase one land area to the developer and the developer's agreement to buy that land subject to a number of conditions outlined in the agreement. So at a high level, what I would say is that the phase one land area would be sold to the developer at the price of four hundred thousand dollars. However, this transaction will not close unless a number of contingencies are satisfied. Those contingencies include the need for the city and the developer to approve both a general development plan and a specific implementation plan that will, the general development plan will provide the zoning framework for the overall riverfront development, not only the phase one land area, but the subsequent phases. And then the specific implementation plan will just be for phase one. So that has to happen. There will need to be a development agreement approved. That's the next item on your agenda. That includes TIF funding for the project. There will need to be approval or by the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation that the developer has submitted a complete application for a brownfield grant and will need the DNR to approve a materials management plan or remedial action plans for the site. The, and the buyer will need to secure financing for the project in order for this to close. Assuming this closes in accordance with the game plan outlined in this agreement, there also is a provision in this agreement that gives the developer an opportunity, basically the first right of opportunity to develop subsequent phases. And there is a mechanism described in section eight of the agreement that describes how that would work, what, what time periods the developer has to trigger an opportunity to negotiate the next phase of the agreement or for the seller to trigger that opportunity. Neither party is bound at this point to agree to anything with respect to subsequent phases, except both parties are bound at least to follow this protocol in terms of how that those next phases would be addressed. So that is the agreement at a high level. Again, I think the council has seen this agreement before. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Anybody have any initial thoughts or questions about the agreement? All right. Not really hearing any. Obviously, this has been kind of a long time coming. I think the RDA has been working on this project for 10 plus years. So, you know, we're excited to be at this point and it's taken several generations of RDA members to get us to this point. So I wanted to express my thanks to all of them. From the get, from the beginning to the current, there's a lot of blood, sweat and tears that go into these, these projects. These are not easy projects that the RDA takes on. There's lots of, you know, complicated issues with not only contamination, but sites and really the finance part of it, which I know Jamin and his team has been working on quite a bit as well. So these things really don't happen. It takes a long time, you know, to make it happen. So thanks for everyone for their part on that. Anybody think of any questions while I was going through that?
No, but this is a good day.
This is a big day.
All right. I have no questions. Did I have a motion and a second on this?
We never really introduced anything.
Okay.
Talking.
Anybody willing to do that?
I'll let Ozzy do it this time.
I'll make a motion to approve this document, R 138 dash 2021.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. I heard a couple of them. Take your pick their hand. It was either Johnson or Schumacher.
Give it to Brett.
All right. Any final thoughts or discussion on this one? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Absolutely. Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. All right. Next item is, is related to this as Matt said, do you want to talk about this one?
Yeah. So this is broken into kind of a two-part discussion. The first part, I think I'm going to let Jamin handle, which is to present to the council, the redevelopment authorities request that TIF funding be approved for this project. And then the actual decision on whether to make TIF funding available will be made within the context of voting on the development agreement, the agreement to undertake development, because that agreement does in fact include TIF funding. So I'll, I think that was kind of, that was the plan here was that first Jamin will describe the, the RDA's request for TIF funding and then we'll move into the agreement.
All right. Jamin, do you want to drive this or do you want me to scroll through it?
You can turn it over to me. I'll go through it pretty quickly.
Okay. I was hoping you'd say that.
Okay. So here is, this probably looks somewhat familiar at this point. This is the memo that the finance department is charged with putting together. Anytime a third party comes in and asks for TIF assistance, I imagine the council was pretty aware this was coming. But this basically coincides with the agreement to undertake development. Really what this is, is providing some history of this site, how we got to where we are, why TIF is needed, who is actually asking for the TIF, and really how it applies to the city's TIF policy. I won't go through this in a lot of detail, but I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions. I think the memo is pretty straightforward and self-explanatory. And I think we really want to focus more on the, the agreement. But I'll certainly answer any questions or feel free to interrupt as I'm going through it. So again, I kind of touched on the memo itself. It really, the first part of it just kind of goes through the history of it, where it started, when it was purchased. Talks a little bit about the charrette and basically where we're at right now. It discusses a little bit in generality in terms of why TIF assistance is needed. And I think everybody was aware that that, that fact was coming with this TIF. And this particular project, obviously this focuses on phase one of the project. Right now we're hoping for four phases of this. You know, one step at a time. So we're focusing on phase one at this point. The RDA is actually the entity that's asking for the TIF assistance. I think, you know, historically the city has seen the developer come in and ask for the TIF assistance. In this particular case, the RDA is actually kind of considered the master developer, if you were, I think is kind of the simplest way of putting this. And they are working with Kurt Brink and his team, who are really kind of the person that, the people that are going to come in and build out phase one. But RDA, for all intents and purposes, is the master developer. Now, it gets a little sticky because the RDA isn't actually getting, isn't actually spending any upfront money on the public improvements. The way the agreement is written right now is the RDA is making the TIF assistance request. But Kurt Brink and his team will pay the upfront costs of the, the public improvements themselves. And then they're asking to be paid back on, on the backend through an MRO, a municipal revenue obligation, which is payable through the increment that is created by phase one of this development. So that's kind of the, the history of where, how we got here and why the RDA is the party that's actually asking for the TIF assistance. You can see here, this section kind of bullet points out our TIF policy. And the rest of the memo, again, I won't go through this in any amount of detail, but again, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Really just kind of discusses how this phase one of this project applies to our TIF policy and why TIF is, should be available for this project. So the memo itself is fairly short, three, four pages. And then on the back, again, we've included a number of exhibits. Hopefully you had a chance to kind of peek at them. So we included the riverfront concept plan, the preliminary public improvements cost estimate, which is the phase one work. And, and that's the part of the project that the TIF assistance is needed on. And then we did provide a couple of exhibits that just summarized the main elements of the development agreement and the purchase agreement. I did include a TIF eight kind of forecasted cash flow and then the phase one forecasted MRO payback. If you had any questions about how the, the TIF looks like it will perform. Now again, this is all based on forecasted information. So it's the best information we have right now, but this, it, this, that attachment does kind of show where we think we're going to end up with all of this in terms of phase one. Exhibit six is the riverfront remediation presentation that was given to you, I think back in May. That's working through the DNR right now, I believe. And then I just included, just for your reference, the today project plan and the city of Stoughton TIF policy. Again, this document is really meant to kind of supplement the, the developer's agreement itself, which includes the actual kind of in the weeds part of the TIF, TIF ask. And it's really just kind of summarizing who's asking for it and why it's needed. Again, I, that's really kind of all I had prepared. It's been through the RDA. I don't think finance has seen this yet, but we did work very closely with the RDA on this document. Again, I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has. But the, the intent of this is really to supplement the development agreement itself.
So there's no need for the council to take action on this, based on Jamin's discussion. That was really intended to provide the background information that you need to understand the TIF request and how the TIF policy applies here and to show that we have followed the policy and done the analysis required by the policy. So I think it might be, unless there are any questions for Jamin now, it, we could move into just a review of the development agreement itself, which includes the TIF funding and other items. So we could get that all in front of you and then open it up for any additional questions you may have. But again, if there are any questions for Jamin right now, I'll, I'll sit and wait for that.
Any initial thoughts or questions from council members? Aldous Person Tokowski.
I have one. About halfway through the document, there, you know, we get into the history of the long history of this TIF. And there were some comments made about features that were included in the TIF. And so I guess what I'm wondering is going forward, those, there would be no changes to the, those sorts of things. The, especially the one I noted was ameliorating the, or mitigating the odors from that happened in downtown. So I just was wondering if, if the, all those things that were pointed out early will continue as part of this.
Are you referring to the, the project plan itself?
Let's see. Oh, this is, this is the 29-page document, right?
This is the 151-page document that we're.
Yeah. Midway, there's a description of elements that were included in the TIF and one was unaroyal and the emission of odors that are, you know, sometimes are problematic. And that one kind of jumped out at me, but it, it's kind of more, maybe a more general question if it's in the text. I think it's page 78 or so. I can tell you. No, it's, it's got a different page number, but it's the one with the Riverwalk at the top. You're pretty close.
Okay, but it's in, it's in this document.
Right.
And this is, so this was the project plan that was created when the, the TIF was created. So this is back from 2018.
Right.
Yeah. And, and the, the city can, can certainly pursue that. It's not part of the agreement that's being discussed tonight.
That was the first place I had seen it, so.
Yeah. The, the project plan is really, it, it's a roadmap. The, the city sticks to it as much as possible. But again, as we, as we worked down the road of this TIF and it's a young TIF, it was created in 2018. So as, as the city sees these phases built out and you start seeing that increment continue to grow and there's money available to, to do certain projects, certainly we can revisit the project plan and, and we will and start identifying some of these things that, that we said we were going to do with this project.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? So I, I guess, Matt, if you want to cover the rest of it and before you start, you know, I'd like to thank, you know, Matt and his team for his efforts and obviously recognize Kurt and his team. There's been a lot of different people working together to get to this point quite a bit lately. You know, trying to put these agreements together, trying to get everybody on the same page. And there's always some give and take, you know, it's kind of like a, like a negotiation when you're working on language. So Matt's done a really nice job of maneuvering and getting us to this, this point right now. Kurt's team has just been, you know, a joy to work with. From day one, he's come down here and he's embraced the vision of the community and tried to put together a plan that reflects our values. And I think that really, you know, if it wasn't for that, we wouldn't be at this point today. Obviously, you know, the engineers, Rodney's been working with, with Stran, our engineers, with Stoughton Utilities and with Kurt's engineers and their team in order to keep this, this thing moving forward. So we're really, you know, excited to be at a point where we can, you know, start doing some work in the spring. So having said all that, Matt, if you want to walk us through this, or I don't know if we have that document on the screen.
Yeah, this would be the agreement attached to R 139. And I have it up here at my home, so I can see it. If you want to put it on the screen, somebody else will have to do that because I don't have control of the screen. I'm going to start with section B of the agreement, which, there we go. Section B begins on page four. Okay, developer obligations. So let's walk through what the developer is required to do first, and then we'll talk about what the city is required to do. So the developer is first required to design and construct the public improvements that are needed to serve this first phase of development. And the public improvements are described in more detail on pages two and three includes utility relocation work, constructing a new street parallel to the Yohara River, doing some work on Fourth Street, doing some stormwater management work. And there may be some additional public improvement work that we identified during the course of reviewing the plans that is, is needed. But the bulk of the work is, consists of those things that I just described. So that's, that's part one. Construct those public improvements needed to serve this phase one of this development. And then second, the developer is required to do the, remediate the environmental contamination on the site and to do that in accordance with the materials management plan and the remedial action plans that will need to be approved by the DNR. And so those are the developers' principal obligations under this agreement. And to do so in accordance with public bidding laws in Wisconsin. Scrolling down then to page. must be page eight. City's obligations. So first, the city will be required to pay for the cost of doing the environmental remediation work. And the city will be required to pay for that work as, as the work is being done upfront. There is a process in the agreement that's laid out for how the, we'll verify that that work has been done and what the costs of the work are, and make sure that we receive appropriate payment requests that are well documented before we disperse the payments. But assuming all those requirements are satisfied, the city will pay for that work. And as you all recall, we spent a lot of time working with True North and Chris Valchov analyzing what the projected costs of this environmental remediation work will be. So I hopefully all remember that we, we did a lot of work in due diligence to understand what, as best we can, what we think that's going to involve. So that's part one. Part two, you see, scroll down to paragraph two where it says municipal revenue obligation for public improvements. So this is the city's other principal obligation. As Jamin indicated earlier, the TIF structure here is that the developer will go out and borrow the money needed to pay for the public improvements. Currently projected to be about a $1.7 million expense. So the developer will have that obligation and will pay, pay for the cost of that work upfront. The city, when the work is completed, will issue a municipal revenue obligation to the developer in the principal amount of whatever the work ultimately costs. So if it costs $1.7 million, the city will issue a municipal revenue obligation to the developer in the amount of $1.7 million payable with interest over time. And the idea is that the developer will then be able to use the payments from the tax increment that's generated to pay the developer's own debt service on, on the money the developer will need to borrow to do this work. So the way this municipal revenue obligation would work is that when the work is completed and we verify the costs, we will issue, the city will issue this revenue obligation. We will prepare a payment schedule at that time that is designed to achieve a balance between paying the developer as quickly as we think we reasonably can. And the agreement says we will, we will pay, we will amortize these payments over 15 years, subject to certain flexibility that we have to deviate from that if needed to avoid deficits in the TIF district fund balance. And so this is in paragraph C of the agreement on the screen now. So when we issue this municipal revenue obligation, Jamin will, will be working to prepare a payment schedule that we think will pay the developer back in such a way that will also make sure the city has sufficient dollars available to meet other TIF expenses as we, as we proceed. This agreement is structured, I'll note, so that only 80% of the tax increment that's generated will, will be required to be allocated to pay the municipal revenue obligation. The remaining 20% of tax increment that is generated each year will be available to the city to fund other TIF project costs without regard to the MRO. So that in a nutshell is the agreement. The developer does the environmental remediation work, the city pays for that work. The developer builds the public improvements, initially financing the cost of that work. The city will repay, will, will refund those dollars to the developer over time out of tax increment that the project generated. So that's it. That's the agreement. Again, I think this has been before the Council before as well. The redevelopment authorities spent a lot of time on this. The Finance Committee has looked at this more than once, including another discussion tonight to delve more deeply into the details of how this municipal revenue obligation will be structured. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Attorney Dragney? They're either totally confused, or you did a great job explaining it.
It's the latter.
We hope.
We hope.
All right, so I'm seeing no questions. So we're looking, what'd you say about action on this tonight?
Yeah, this would be, if, if the Council is prepared, certainly the, the agenda gives the Council the opportunity to approve this resolution tonight.
Do you want me to introduce it and?
Yes, please.
That'd be great. Is it up there? I'm having issues with my screen.
I got it on mine. It's R 139, 2021, approving the agreement to undertake development by and among the city of Stoughton, the city of Stoughton Redevelopment Authority, and the Stoughton Riverfront Development LLC, an ISO move.
Second.
It was a race to the second. Take your pick, Candy. All right, and since President Hirsch introduced it, you have any comments? You've been working on this a long time.
Yes, and it's very nice that it's coming in here. And I too, I want to thank Matt and his team, and obviously Kurt Brink and his team, too, and Jamin, obviously, that have really worked hard in getting this together, as well as Dale Reeves of the RDA and the rest of the RDA to really finally get this through. It's exciting, and it's one more hoop that gets us on the way to a fabulous development on the riverfront. So I would highly encourage you to support this and approve it.
All right, older person, Jensen.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just a comment. I was on council when, actually it was my first year on council, when we designated this as a blighted area. And the whole project started, and we created the RDA. So as as a older member of this committee, I am so pleased to see it come to fruition. And I want to reiterate all the things, I want to thank everybody that has, is on RDA, who has served on RDA, all the past council members, mayors, everybody. This has been a long, long time, and I am so glad to see it come to fruition and in such a good way. So it has my undivided and my full support.
All right, any other comments or thoughts from elders? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, that carries. And I think we're at a point where I'm looking for one more motion. I heard it. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of a adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. Have a good night.